Quickly call this meeting to order. It's in six thirty, five thirty two. I don't know, five thirty two. Um, and we are going to, can I just have a motion to enter non-public?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Also.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So we're gonna go put the into non-public.
Okay, I will turn video and mute off.
Honestly, I told those.
And we're just coming back from a non-public, we'll be getting started in just a minute.
Plug, plug stopper thing there, you know, like the.
Yep.
The baby.
The cover, yes.
Yeah, only babies can open them.
I know, right?
Couldn't tell me to plug it in. It's already there.
Have to be able to do something there. All right.
I had to Google the word the first time in a very long time. So Ludo Genesis, what in the world does that mean? I have no idea. It's like. And it's open acceptance of the wholeness of what makes a person. I'm still not a hundred percent sure I grasp that. I need time.
Okay. You. You have access to. Remember my question? Okay, so um. We are. Let's say we are officially out of non-public at six sixteen. I think Jess was starting to take notes, but because she's left, maybe we can just mark that in minutes. Thank you. Um, so we are going to jump right into our public input time because our public has been so patient.
Oh.
So if you, if you would like. For we're.
Yeah, I'm actually fighting for, fighting for time here. The, uh, no, the only, the only, I wanted to ask like that, I, uh, prior to the starting summer, there were a lot of, uh, really, uh. Encouraging and exciting initiatives that the board, various members of the board have suggested and promoted such as. Communication out to the, to the, uh, public on needs of the school that might be beyond, uh, the resources available to the budget. And so I just, out of curiosity, any of that come to fruition? I'm not on Twitter immediately, so, um, you know. Uh, I, I wouldn't know if that, any of that has come to pass yet, or. You know, as we jump into the school year, whether it's upholstery of the items over there. Or, uh, so shoes or whatever it might be, I didn't know any of that. And, uh.
I'll, I'll jump in. I, I think it was my idea somehow.
It was.
Out to the community.
Yeah.
I'm like you, I am not a, and I'm making excuses, I'm not a social media guy, I'm not on any of the. Stuff. Bad excuse, but. I'm not, I'm not gonna be the guy that's gonna be able to facilitate that, that interaction and that exposure, so. I would defer to my fellow board members and.
I think it was a great idea and, and, um, I get a lot of people in town who would be willing to pony up in various circumstances or. You, you don't, we don't know if somebody owns an upholstery shop.
Right.
And, and do those kinds of things. So I didn't know.
So I think that there are some things that were on the list.
There were some things on the list and after that was one of them, and actually it's on deliberate, it'll be here soon. So just as an example, that was, that was one of the things. Um, I can go back to some of the things we talked about. I don't. I'm not aware of the snowshoes and anything on that front.
Well, I was aware that we don't use the word surplus too much.
Yeah.
It may have been rumored, but I did, I probably were just part of that last, at the end of the school year.
In the minutes for the last meeting, there was a list, we went through the list and there were multiple items that were approved. So I know that, I'm sorry, just two were called.
Shoes and snowshoes and I think the cushions.
Yeah, the new furniture is in the lobby, which is nice.
Yeah.
That's not there.
So, um, and if you don't use social media, the minutes are posted on the website, so that's one way that's helpful, but yeah, we need to work on like how we communicate.
Yeah, I just more of, but, but, you know, to the point that you had brought up was, was, um, the, the outreach. It wasn't so much because people would have to search the minutes, but is there a way on the, the town's website or the town's. You know, to click here for, you know, if you want to help this, this school. It was more, it was more of what's that process look like where if people wanted to help, they might not know how, but they may have the means to.
So, um, there was one thing that I was working on is the survey to work on best ways to communicate with everyone because exactly we're talking about. So, um, I guess I can give an update on that, is it okay for time? So I, uh, it took longer to get the cards printed than I had anticipated. I thought it would be easy, like send it and they print it like the next day or two. That is not what happened. Um, last I knew Amy had it and they were, do you happen to know?
So, yeah.
Does it have any responses yet? So don't think they've been nailed out yet.
They have not. Um, we ran into a little glitch with stamping them. Our bulk mailer can't stamp those. We usually like actually print the stamp on them, so Amy's looking into just how we might be able to send them out. Yeah. Um, or any adjustments we might need to make, so they have not been sent out yet.
Okay, so, um, that was one way we were trying to figure out what is the best way to get in touch with everyone, so we're actually, folks are gonna be getting a postcard in the mail in the next. Maybe week or two and, and I offered, I'll can email her again, but I offered to help, like, I literally, I'll go stamp them.
Yeah.
Because I know it takes time and effort to do that, and I think there's a lot of them. Um, but yeah, trying to figure out the best way we can communicate with not just parents of the school, but like the whole community, what's happening? That's something that we're actively working on and we will have data for at worst case, the next. Match meeting, if that's not, is that gonna be too much of a interrupter for our work with the, um, middle school committee? So she, okay, yeah, so that'll be going out and through postcards in everyone's mail. Um, and then hopefully, and I'll also be posting a social media for folks that are more prone to use social media, but we'll have better idea of what, what folks want to use. To hear from us.
And just so you know, it's the same, similar topic that we had just the other night at the SAU board meeting was. We're trying collectively, not just here, but all the boards are trying to outreach, you know, and it's like, okay, how do we do it effectively without incurring costs? What's the best way? And I don't think we've. We've nailed it yet.
No.
We just, we're all working at it, but we haven't got to that point where. Ben, so.
Well, we do also, we have communication policies that we have to abide by, so it gets a little bit tricky. Uh, like for instance, I posted about the openings for the, um, SEU budget committee. So I can post that like as myself as a citizen, but then if I'm responding, I need to be clear that I'm not responding as a representative of the board at that time. So I basically point people to, here's how, here's who you can go to for information, so it's just. It's, it's board communication with well, that can be tricky. Because no one person can speak for, speak as a board member unless you are seated as the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we try, but it's tricky.
And I think this past year, so it's just a, just a general comment, this past year, um, school boards across the country, it was a tumultuous year. I think that's the kind of way to say it. And, um. And I think that a lot of that has to do with parents learning on the tail end. Of something as opposed to on the front side of things. And, um, in some cases being, um, misinformed. Um, and so that information may be even more critical to get out in front. And that has nothing to do with seeking support for, you know, various needs of the school, but. Um, I think just, you know, closer, I think closer, uh, communicate more, more proactive communication in the community. May even encourage greater, I mean, I, I love coming here because I'm just so, um. Encouraged, you know, having a child here and another one ready to come here next year. Um, just so encouraged by just the school and the school board and. And, um, Adam, like, uh, Dino's gone now, which is the, the work that he had done. It was encouraging. I think more of the community should know that there are good things being done here.
Yeah.
I should pursue the, the town website somehow, that we need to become a bookmark on the.
I think we are.
We are.
I think we are bookmarked on the town website. Hopefully, once the survey that Kristen's put together, once that goes out and we get some responses, we'll have a better idea of how people are interested in engaging. Um, and then we can kind of go where the people are, I think is, is our best route. Um.
Yeah, and my thoughts, I don't want to just take that leap. I also, and we've talked about this at the larger SAU meeting, but I actually want to be collecting data on how people are accessing our communication. So that we can see what's not just what people are saying is gonna work for them, but also what is actually effective. And there's lots of ways we can be creative about it. Um, like I was thinking about with the newsletter, like hyperlinking to time points in the YouTube videos to where we have recordings. But that is also time consuming for us and then future board members. So we have to be thoughtful, like, yeah, it's okay for me to do that, but is it gonna be okay for the next person? Um, if I'm not here when I, you know, go up for election again, so. There's like a lot of, there's a lot of considerations to it, but it is a very important and highly, highly, uh, talked about topic that we're trying to work on. Because yeah, folks need to know and people, our parents are so busy. So parents of school, they don't have time to watch two hours of a YouTube video of a school board meeting, like, I mean, I didn't before I joined and. I know that that is so difficult for the community as well.
So Tom's TikTok videos are still on.
Middle of August, you're gonna get the first one. Hang on, hang on.
But I think to your point, you may have brought this up before, like some of the items that we have on UFB that we pulled. Is there's like maybe a way to put it on the school website, hey, these snowshoes, anyone? Have a contact that we, you know, we're looking for snowshoes and this is why, you know, we want to use it for this program or cushions, we're looking for. You know, someone may be wanting to step up and purchase them, but they're totally unaware, so maybe we pick a couple of things every meeting and post on the website, hey, we're looking for this.
I do have the UFB list from last year, there were only two items that were not funded, it was the banners for the gym, and I know you were already in touch with the PTA. About that, and then it's just the snowshoes, and I think with the snowshoes, that might even be a PTA piece. Uh, because I know they were looking at different fundraising options and how we might use, um, the, the fundraising, um, for that, but it's certainly something we should keep in mind. Um, if the snowshoes, again, are, you know, our PE teacher who requested them and for, you know, fortunately and unfortunately. Fortunately, our, our prior PE teacher returned, um, to us after their maternity leave, um, but unfortunately. Our PE teacher from last year, you know, she got a job elsewhere, so, um. Uh, you know, I, I'd wanna make sure we check in with our new, um, returning PE teacher with that as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay. We are.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, slow.
Couple of months ago, same meeting problem, you met, you had mentioned, we were talking about equipment in the kitchen, you said you might have sore. For.
We, we tried.
Soda.
Yep, yep, the, the end of that was that it took a little bit too long to get the information back about whether or not we needed electric or gas.
Okay.
And by that time, um, a third party, uh, procurement company, they kept coming and just purchased it.
Okay.
So, um, we tried, it was just that it was, it took, just took a little bit too long, yeah. Thank you, there's a steamer and an oven.
Thank you for trying.
Yeah, I was so close, we were so close.
I was ready to drive to Minneapolis.
You'd be a great man.
Still the thought that counts. Okay, folks, so we are up to our consent agenda approval. Before we get into that, did anybody have anything that they would like to pull and discuss? Um, I would like, uh, just to quickly ask about the student handbook. For Tom and Christine, do you have any updates on that and changes? And I know, I can kind of. Kind of circle it into the summer updates for policy. Where that, where, did we have changes that needed to be made, made there that have been made already and. It's kind of what I'm.
Yeah, let me.
Looking for.
I'll have Tom give an overview, but I have a policy document that I share, um, for handbooks with our building leaders. Tom, do you want to do a quick overview just about the, the major changes?
Yeah, sure. Um, major change of the layout, actually, um, and I don't, I don't think. It doesn't really change a lot of the content, but, um, honestly, I think the handbook was a little bit hard to read, uh, for. The audience, which is, uh, parents and students. And, for example, there was no table of contents. Um, a lot of the categories were just kind of jumbled, you'd be reading about. Uh, maybe food service and then next thing is transportation and food service and then student expectation, so. We, we categorized it, um, into sections that we hope make sense to folks as they read through it. Um, in terms of content, just a lot of just updates for the new year. And then procedural things. Um, just gonna go down through here.
A lot of cleaning up language and clarifying one thing, um, the handbook has just kind of been updated each year, but no one comprehensively went through to synthesize, and that's really what Tom did.
It looks great.
Yeah, just the organization and the synthesis, yeah.
Try to, try to just organize a little bit. Student expectations, you might have heard of SOAR by now. You heard SOAR. Um, so we're digging in more on that this year, it's, it's not just a, hey, we're soaring, we're Falcons thing. Um, there really is a more intentional aspect to that in terms of how we're going to approach student expectations. Um, and being that we are responsive school, responsive classroom, really the approach to it is, um. Is a positive. Uh, we want a sense of belonging, connection to what we're doing, so we are soaring together, we're showing respect, and then what does that look like in various components of the school? The hallways, the classroom, recess, lunch, and so on. Um, so there's a matrix in there related to SOAR and related to some of those, uh, student expectations. So just lost my tab.
Tom, I'll jump in with a few policy, um, updates to the handbook. One thing was, um, just. Clarifying and providing a little bit more detail around the lunch program and meal charging, that was, um, it's not, uh, you know, our policy doesn't require that information be in the handbook, but. Um, we did ask building leaders this year to just, um, make sure that that information was clearly in there. The other update, um, was JICC, the, um, bus rules being published in the student handbook, most of our student handbooks already had bus rules in them, but. We, um, met earlier, uh, probably in early spring with building leadership across the SAU, just to talk about bus rules. Um, and to just make sure that there was some consistency across the schools, yet, um, a little adjustments for age appropriateness. Certainly, our high school bus rules are a little bit different than our elementary bus rules. Um, so that piece was, um, clarified and, and we made sure and probably a little more consistency, and then JLF. Um, this was a policy that, um, we are supposed to have information about reporting child abuse and neglect in the student handbook. That was something that, um, you know, I, I came across this year that we missed in the handbook in previous years. And related to that, as we added that to our handbooks, um, Kristin, our, our new principal at the middle school. Mentioned how as she was reading through the AMS handbook, there really wasn't a lot of information for families about our school counselors and social workers. And the importance of knowing who to contact for support and for help and for what reasons. Um, so we added a little section about school counseling in our handbooks, which we thought would be really helpful for all families. So those were our major updates regarding policy. Last year, we did a huge policy review and overhaul with the student handbook, so we felt pretty good about that. Um, I have a document for, um, building leaders that lists every single policy that has to be linked in the handbook. And the information that they need to make sure that they include in the handbook, so that we're sure we're not missing anything. So it's helpful, each year I just say, here are the updates for this year. And put that in there, so, um, that's the, the policy piece. Um, Tom, was there anything?
That was, that was the basic, um, overview on it. Um, unless you have any questions about specific details in it, it's, it's really the structure, just one quick question you left in. Bus rule on that topic, any issues with the buses? For this year, you have enough.
We should be fine, um, with buses, we are planning three buses, that's, uh, more than adequate for Mount Vernon students. Um, bus routes are not quite finalized yet, so we're still working closely, Amy's working very hard with the bus company on that. Um, one change that we did this year, which, um, excited and hopeful that it's gonna really help ease our bus situation. We had families opt in to busing this year through Power School. Now, if a family didn't respond, we did put them on a bus. So, uh, a no response took a student off a bus, me, well, sorry. If a parent responded no on the survey, we did not reserve a bus stop or a bus seat for that student. If a parent responded yes, they got a seat, and if they did not respond at all, they still got a seat, um, on the bus. And parents are, um, aware that if their situation changes. That during the school year, they just need to let us know, we'll let the bus company know, and it would take us just a few days and up to a week. To make sure there's a stop and a space on a bus for a student. So I'm hopeful that that actually eases our bus routes and makes things a little bit simpler, um, but we'll, we'll see how things shake out.
But I like that, the default for the, yeah, because I was like, when I saw the wording, I was like, that's confusing.
We, yeah, we tried to be strong and, uh, we, we tried to hold firm with, you have to fill this out to get a bus, but. We still had a significant number of families that hadn't filled it out, so we realized to be safe, we needed to give those students a bus.
Yeah, it sounded like if you were new, then you needed to fill it out, and I was like, oh, you know, yeah, that's how it sounded, and I was like, I even, I was confused, and then I was.
Yeah, if that ever happens, just let me know and we can send out an update, because, you know, we, we always read it five times, but we know what, what we're asking for in our head. Um, so, uh, you know, definitely don't feel badly about.
You handled it perfectly, so I, I don't, I don't think anybody will get missed this way, so that's really good.
So, quick question. I'm on Dow Road. And he's kind of my alarm clock when he goes. And I can't speak to it because I'm, I'm not sure, down at the beginning of the street, I'm at the end by the cul-de-sac. I don't think he's picking up anybody on Dow Road. And I think he comes through an hour later, forty-five minutes later, same thing, the high school. And I'm pretty sure he's not picking up anybody.
Yeah.
So my question is, I know there was some time issues, getting buses where they should be. At what point does the driver have the ability to say? Okay, I didn't pick up anybody on Dow Road for the, for an entire week. Does he go back to his superior boss and they go, you know? There's literally, it's a waste, I mean, he's literally driving in the cul-de-sac. Twice a day, five days a week, and honestly, God. I don't think he's picking up anybody. So it's like, how do we use that information to tighten things up, make it better for everybody?
Yeah.
Without leaving kids on the side of the road.
Um, so that's been the tricky part, the bus company typically after two weeks of no one going to a stop, the bus drivers are supposed to tell the bus company. And then the bus company is supposed to investigate, um, I'm not sure that that's always been happening, and it is something I did, um, have a meeting. Um, so Kelly, our student data specialist, who's the one who manages all of our data going to the bus company. Um, uh, Amy and I met with, uh, Deb, who's the lead at Butler Bus, and we talked through all of those logistical pieces. Um, we want to follow up after about two to three weeks, and we're gonna sit down and meet with Deb again and go through all of those pieces and just firm up, okay? What routes, you know, what, what stops don't have any students at them? Um, one of our big concerns and, and, um. Uh, there are very few high, high school students that are riding the buses, there certainly are some. But we're worried that, you know, a parent maybe didn't respond to the survey, saying no. We've reserved a, a bus seat and a bus stop for those students, and then it's same thing if, if after two to three weeks, they're not picking anyone up. We really want to be reaching out because it's just inefficient, and with a driver shortage, if there's anything we can do to either reduce the number of buses or to, you know, we don't want buses so tight that we have discipline problems and. Um, that, you know, that the routes are an hour and a half long, we certainly don't want that, so we, we need to kind of find that right balance. Where routes are a reasonable length, buses are full enough that it's efficient, but we also don't have major behavior problems. So there's lots of things to balance, so, uh, we have a meeting planned with Deb after the first few weeks of school to kind of check in on all those pieces.
I know our.
Cost, I'm sorry, it's a cost that you do because. People are very expensive, especially on the diesel one.
And we pay an overage in our contract, I think it was like a two sixty a gallon or something when we signed our contract.
She budgeted three fifteen, it's like. Yeah.
I. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chair.
Yes.
Question on the report that we get of expenditures. Um, I'm on page fourteen, I think it is, yeah, it's fourteen. Is there any way, and I'm not questioning the expenses at all. Is there any way we could get? A description about what the payment was for, I mean, obviously Eversource. Pretty obvious. But like, um. NCS Pearson Incorporated, kind of, what is that? What is?
Which, sorry, which page are you on the?
On the agenda.
Page sixteen.
Fourteen.
Sorry.
Just a quick explanation. Again, I'm not questioning any of the payments to anybody or any corporation or company. But is there any way, you know, what is eleven hundred and twenty-three dollars to GH Shaw for? You know, supplies, okay? Or labor, or just a quick. What's it for? Not just a, an expense, is that possible?
And that's part of the treasurer's report, right, on page fourteen?
It's consent agenda item number three, and it starts with the ledger. And then the next page is the accounts payable voucher for February twenty-two. And on the next page, which is. Page fourteen. It's back to February twenty-eight, so I don't know why those are still there, but anyway. As we get these reports, is there any way to just get a? What, two, three, four, five word description of what we're paying?
Yeah, that's the treasurer, so I can speak to Amy about speaking with the treasurer about this.
But I think the. The larger issue, that's a good point. Is, is there ongoing review internally for some of this stuff, because you see them on the ledger. But like internally, because it's one thing to see our report, but. You know, if the division manager, if I sit with the division manager and I'm looking at expenses, things are, is that kind of ongoing review? I, I understand the stuff is budgeted, could be timing issues sometimes, a lot of stuff they've expected this in December, why are we seeing it now? Now we're seeing a lot of it just because you need to lock down a lot of these vendors, there's all supply chain issues, we could talk about all day. But I think to his point, is that going on in the background that, and, you know? It's fine, I trust you guys, but as far as how do you know something's? Maybe needs to be investigated, so I'm looking at the March one, just real quick, GH Shaw's again, and that's eleven twenty-three and seven, so. It looks like it's a monthly payment. I personally, maybe I should know, but I don't know. What does GH Shaw and Son do for Mount Vernon University School?
Yeah, and I have no idea what company that is, it's a very good question, so.
That's all, just a little peek out of the hood of what we're doing.
Yep. Nope, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Uh, and internally, we have both our director of finance and our accountant who monitor all of that, so there's no, no expenditure can happen until we have a purchase order. And that we have a multi-step approval process, obviously, for all purchase orders, both Katie and Amy are like hawks in looking at those. Um, and then, once a purchase order is approved, um, as bills come in, every bill goes to the SAU, it doesn't come here. So every bill goes to the SAU Bonnie and Accounts Payable, reviews the bill, checks for a purchase order, sends the bill to whoever initiated the purchase order. For them to do an okay to pay, because they need to make sure that services were rendered or items received. Um, once that okay to pay comes through, then they process the check. Um, any POs that are open and sitting for too long, that's what our accountant does, routinely goes through open POs and says, hey, this has been open for two months or three months. What's, what's happening, can we close this out or not? And we have a pretty good internal process for, um. Closing out, you know, anytime, um, an invoice is paid, if the PO is for five thousand and the invoice was only for two. Do we close that PO and return the rest of that three thousand dollars? Or are we keeping it open because another invoice is coming through? So we have a pretty good process for that as well.
So bottom line, everything, any expenditure we come through is all PO driven. And I'm assuming the individual that creates the PO is not the same one that approves it.
Correct. Yeah, we have pretty significant internal controls.
Part, part of your role, ongoing, on the annual, on the stuff.
Yes.
It's testing it per se, but we're looking at, okay, do I see a PO against this receipt?
Yes, and so every receipt needs to be dated or invoice should be dated after the date of the PO creation, so that's one thing that the auditors check all the time. Uh, and then the other piece, um, is, uh, you know, i- if we don't have a PO and we have a receipt. Then there needs to be, you know, some sort of letter or form explaining what happened and how we got an invoice without a PO being created. Typically here at Mount Vernon, most POs are created by Jen, so Jen creates them, then Tom approves them, if their curriculum or technology I would approve, or Brian would also approve. And then it goes on to Katie and to Amy, so, um, it, it's two people in the business office approving and then. A building leader and sometimes also a, a department head as well. So lots of controls.
Did you ever do the manifest, did you ever? Do you ever sign on, yeah?
Yeah, I scrolled through.
You can see, you can see all of the information.
No.
So, I mean, Kristen can show you that on here too, but it shows you all of the information there, if you ever question online, just call Katie or.
And don't get wrong, I mean, we've got a glowing report on the account.
It's good to ask.
It lists that line by line, so me and Jessica both get them, I didn't realize it was called a manifest, so I feel really, so, yeah, I was like, wait, is this what we're talking about? And it goes line by line about all the expenses, and then me and Jess, so it's like all the internal checks and balances, plus then the board. Plus then the board gets ahold of it, those of us that were assigned to the manifest. So, but, yeah.
Thank you.
And once you look at them for, I mean, like I did it for years. And once you look at them for a couple of months, that you start to get in the flow of what looks normal and what looks abnormal and. And you know what questions to ask, but in the beginning, you're just looking if it's like, what is it all?
And I stopped signing it because I was like, I don't know what this is. What am I signing? And then I got some like, what's going on? And I was like, I was gonna call you. I didn't, I'm sorry. I like stopped up.
Actually, a check does not go out until board member signs it. So that's what the manifest is. So after we've done all of our internal process. Every, um, reimbursement packet or invoice packet gets scanned. So Sue Ledger scans every single packet. She then Sarah tags them all, puts them in an online folder, a Google folder online. Then, um, the school board members have to review every single reimbursement and paid invoice, sign off on it, and then checks are released.
So you have the line items and then there's actual like receipt attached to the packet. I can show you after.
So maybe in order to streamline and get to what you're talking about. Take the top five percent expense. We know the biggest expense is going to be payroll, but beyond payroll, what AP expense, give me the top five percent expenses. Just quick blur, what is this? What is this rather than, if there's anything beyond that in particular that, hey, this, this vendor looks kind of. Weird, why would it be, even if it's only like two and a half, what is that? But I would be concerned looking at the more material items.
Is that something that me or Jessica should do to take?
I mean, you could give a quick summary each month of, hey, these, you know, these are some of the highlights from what we've. Uh, you know, what we saw this month while we signed the manifest. The other piece too is we can certainly ask the treasurer for more detail instead of just saying G H Shaw, especially if it's a big. Ticket item, you know, we know whatever source is certainly, but, um, some of those other pieces and like Lexicate, I, I, that's a translation service we use. I know that, but you guys don't know what Lexicate. Is. So that might be helpful. So I think it's a both and.
Could other board members be put on the workload for the, for the panadoc signature, like not to sign, but the two people that are assigned to them. If their signatures are required, but then maybe everybody else could be almost C C. But then if people, if you've got questions, you could ask them. And, I mean, I think the thing to know, like, especially if you're watching this at home or, um, for our. Fabulous member of the public, um, is that at least two board members every month or multiple times a month are reviewing. The manifest in addition to all the people in the business office. So it's, I mean, we are aware of the comings and goings of the funds in our district.
Literally every line, every single line item.
Every purchase order, every invoice is reviewed by the board.
I always thought the manifest was fascinating because you learned a lot about how things work.
A book from Amazon, like I have a receipt for what it was ordered, like everything.
That's how I learned that you were paying for actual, I saw a gym expense or something that came through when I was over at seven. Where everything, this is one of the first year I was on the phone, I went, like, oh, okay.
No, you learn a lot from signing a manifest.
Not trying to create extra work for anybody. If there's something we already had that's just not available to us.
It might be too that, um, we just give you access to the Google Drive that holds the manifest and then you're able to say, when you get the treasurer's report, huh, what's this G H? Shaw piece and then you go and, um, it, it, we might need to, you know, business office might need to support you in finding those expenses. Um, certainly that might be a solution, or it might be that the treasurer provides more detail.
Yeah, maybe let's just start with that. Just give us the access. Don't create anything else. And then just kind of go from there.
Yeah, and I could tell you the G W Shaw I was looking for is disposal services.
Oh, okay.
So it's some kind of. I was like, oh, okay, building process stuff.
Yeah, it could even list though treasurer could list what department, like, so that's curriculum and that's facilities. That's. Because it does, and every P O does say, I don't know if you've noticed in the middle at the top of the P O's, it does say what department created. The P O, which is helpful too.
It does. Waste disposable recycling container. I know anything sent agenda, we, uh, there's the two grant applications. We had the ability to be brief on those briefly, but they're in there. Um, did I even have any additional questions for Christine on that? I feel good about that being in and, yeah, um, addressing some safety concerns and really positive for our building. Christine, did you want to say anything about the curriculum and P D update and summer work or?
Yeah, um, it's been a busy summer. We always get the, oh, do you work in the summer question? So I thought it was really helpful to see, and we've been able to do some really exciting things this summer that are, are unique to, not only have we done some great. And have some great professional development plan for teachers. We've been able to hold in addition to our title one program, which has been really successful this year. Um, and hopefully you've got a chance. If you haven't, click on the little links for the, um, weekly, um, updates for title one. Maggie Holm has done a great job. The title one and keeping families updated with the work that our students are doing in the title one program. Um, and I, I've been visiting title one and the kids are always smiling. So I think it's so great. They're here for support. Um, and they're, they're happy and they, they, they just love being with their peers and seeing their teachers. And the teachers just give them that chance to, you know, just be welcomed and supported. Um, and it's small group, so it's really nice. They get that chance to connect with just a smaller group of peers. So. Title one kids have been really happy, really excited. Our teachers have done an unbelievable job. Um, and this year something brand new that we did because we had some extra grant funds due to COVID. They were not COVID funds. They were funds I wasn't able to use when we were shut down. Our title four, uh, which is a well-rounded education fund. Um, I was able to use those funds to provide a summer enrichment program, and that was really only because of our teachers. Our teachers were willing to do the summer enrichment program. And, uh, in the spring I said, hey, I have this idea. Let's do this summer enrichment program, but I need ideas from all of you. What are you willing to teach? What are you interested in teaching? And, um, we've just had an unbelievable program. We had a STEM program. Um, that Laura Graham, uh, taught with Charlene Brown, and they did tons of hands-on experiments and Charlene brought the math piece into it. Maggie Holm and Susannah Hargraves did a nature and art program. And then, um, Christine Alahura, our art teacher, did some technology and some, um, really STEM programming. So she did. Which I wanted to attend, but, um, stop motion animation and claymation, which was really neat. And she also did robotics and coding. So really unbelievable is no cost to families because we use this federal grant. And our teachers really enjoyed working the, the program. I had them, um, you know, I asked them to speak to students and get feedback. I know many parents have shared. Some feedback with the program. We did it in the afternoons, um, which a little warmer and no air conditioning, but. It paired with title one. So some families that maybe normally couldn't send their children to our title one program because they needed a full day. Program and title one is, has traditionally been a half day. It's hard to keep students here for the full day. They were able to stay the full day and experience the, the full program. So they really had programming from nine to three thirty. And we had lunch coverage in the middle of the day for those students to have, um, lunch. So they got more intensive support in the morning. Focused more deeply on academics and then they got enrichment in the afternoon. So it was a really nice pairing. So I'm hoping to be able to do the program again next year. We should have enough funding. For that, luckily those grants overlapped for two years, so I can kind of pull funding together, um. For that, but we've had some great feedback on those programs.
Yeah, I want to echo what Christine said about the teachers, unbelievable. And it's always fun when you walk into a room and there's like five kids, hey, come here, this is like, I'm gonna show you this. And, you know, the robots, the dot dash robots. Really cool. Um, today they were out in the bird garden doing some, uh, nature art. Uh, and just, uh, just really creative, really, really neat stuff. Kids been engaged, excited.
Really strong, especially for our, um, younger, um. Students, I was surprised. I thought, you know, there's not as much enrichment programming for older or summer programming period for older students. We had, um, about, um, you know, anywhere from twelve to fourteen students in the, um. Upper grade program, but it, it ranged, you know, uh, it certainly, some of ours were only like nine or ten, um, students. And with the little ones, one of our programs hit fifteen. I was like, oh no. But that was a little big. Um, so we actually had Charlene Brown help another week with Christie because registration went, um, a little bit over than we were even expecting. Before I was able to close it. Um, but, uh, I, I was surprised at how, um, how much interest there was in the programming. And I'll be sending a survey out to families, um, just to get feedback on the program. Good.
When I got home, she showed me the, the, the first week, I think you guys did the stop animation. And I had to sit there and eat dinner.
The video?
Seth, she finds up on my lap and she shows me all the video. And one of the videos, I think. One of the teachers took it with her phone, but it was upside down. So had I turned the laptop upside down, it was kind of funny. Just, it was great. She really loved it.
That's such an art form you don't get to see like as a kid, like you don't realize what goes into it.
Like Gumby.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Christmas, you know.
So again, I'll circle back to our outward communication, the non-social event. That's exactly the kind of stuff that we need to shout out. That how great it is, pictures of kids participating. That's what we need to kind of bang our chest, you folks, not me. You guys need to bang your chest and go. This is what we're doing up here and.
Yeah, because I think at some point, it's like the oldest guy following the parents though, because there's only so many ways, so many avenues we can communicate. It's great to put it all out there. But at the end of the day, guys, you gotta be involved. You gotta be involved because unless you want us knocking on your door, which I don't think anyone's willing to do. I know I'm not, but.
He says no. Also like the community that doesn't have children here that are paying taxes to fund the school. They need to see the special things that.
Well, and I'll tell you, not having kids in the school anymore and not like not, I mean, I see your newsletter because I get to see your newsletter, but not getting it in my inbox. Like that, that it kind of disconnects you from what happens here. So there's great things that are listed there, but I do, I agree. I mean, when you don't have kids in the school here. It would be fabulous to share those wonderful things that happen here because it's a magical location, you know, good things happen.
You know, our company has a site called Gamma. All our teams are encouraged to take pictures of what they do. We're just selling sugar water, but. They put up their pictures about their accomplishments. It's kind of a brag, it's a brag site basically, but it's a great way for. People to see what other people in the company are doing. So. You know, like all of Roger's pictures are awesome. You know, it's like, okay, there's where my money's going. But, you know, you, you and your team should be shouting out like, hey, we're doing some good stuff up here.
We probably should try to do a summer update, both of, a facilities piece as well as like the curriculum and the, um, uh, programming that we provided and even. You know, print a few of them off and leave them at the general store and leave them at the library. Um, one, one other thing that we've done, um, the S A U created bookmarks. Like little like, uh, paper bookmarks to bring to the library. So both the town libraries in both towns have them. And it says bookmark it and with our website. And it also on the back of it has a Q R code that you can scan to get to our website. So really trying to encourage people to. Go to our website as well. So we're hoping that helps a little bit. So that is one piece that we've done. But we have also heard some feedback, hey, if you have little flyers or things that, you know, that drop them in places where people are, just so that they can see what we've done.
A knitting group, that means like, I mean, just like folks within the community that aren't necessarily sending their kids to school, but that do care what happens because. They pay a lot of money that ends up going to worse school. Like I think maybe we could like create a list of like stuff that's happening in the town that could be the drop sites for like. Something like that to work on.
But I think the communication as far as, forgive me, I mean, I should know this, but a lot of what Roger does really needs to, I think. Go out to the public because one of the things when I was down the hill, um, when this whole thing with. Possibly funding in middle school, a lot of stuff I heard was. You know, where are our texts? Do they not perform any maintenance and stuff like that? Which is people not knowing. They don't know what they don't know. And it's like shame on us not being able to maybe get that to them. But at the same time, you guys need to do a research. There's only so much we can do. But at least I think a lot of what Roger does need to be thrown out there because. You may not see what's going on, but this is what's happening. This is where your dollars are going. So it's not like we're sitting there ignoring all stuff aside was like, well, there was a reason why I decided. Because we've been doing this, this and that. There's only so many dollars. So if someone wants to step up and pay for it.
Yeah.
We have to prioritize. Is there a town, Mont Vernon?
Mont Vernon Chatter?
That's on Facebook. There is Mont Vernon, it's like Mont Vernon.
A lot of people on that.
On Mont Vernon Chatter. Is the town website.
The chatter is the Facebook.
Chatter is the Facebook.
Right, right.
And then there's another one. There's Mont Vernon N H, which is not officially.
But I do wonder, do we do like a summer community update for Mont Vernon, post it on chatter, have a few paper copies available in some. Local spots and just really brag.
Who's out, so who's going to take care of that? And I, I will.
Well, I have the update I just sent that to start, I can give you the link and you could post that somewhere. That's.
Yeah, I wonder should we do?
The siding, it's got the.
Oh.
Summer program. Kids, yeah.
Great.
So I can share the link.
Yeah. So if you've already created it and included a lot of that. Yeah.
Yeah, I want people to understand this is a well-maintained facility. Yeah, because that was one of the other things I heard like crazy. They're asking us for all this money. Where did all this money go? And it's like, guys, it's, it's expensive to run a school. Forget about the salary, just the physical structure itself.
Well, look, there's a summer concert series happening. So like, how many folks, I mean, summer concerts are usually very busy. So like, what could we do to like have flyers available at the summer concert series?
Yeah.
Where we can reach.
And I'm not looking to create more, just is there something that we're already doing that we can get people to work through?
That's, and I did talk to Heather Kennedy and Joanne at the library to give me updates to put in this. So I, I actually. So it's a twofold thing, you know, so, so I'll, I'll.
You share it with me. I'm happy to share it.
Maybe post on chatter.
Yeah, I can do. We're actually like circling around and touching on the laptop.
I know.
Flow, even though we're sort of out of the, although it's all good. We do. One thing that I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention is the, um. The budget calendar is in here, so I just pass and I'll make sure that Jess is aware as well, but the dates are in here. So if you put them into your calendar, that would be fabulous. Some of them are morning dates, just, um. As an FYI, I think there's a, there's a, first one is a, is an evening. It's on page forty of the packet, consent agenda item number seven.
But I'm assuming there'll be links to, if you can physically, if that.
I believe so. I think.
Uh, that's a good question. I'd have to, Amy couldn't join us tonight. She had another commitment.
That's what I'm going, my budgeting and I'm.
Yeah, you're stuck. Yeah.
Basically going to see me on the screen.
The other thing with the budget calendar, I know Amy was hoping we might be able to assign, um, I know we don't have. Public that are budget subcommittee members yet, but we normally assign board members to certain sections of the budget. So I know Jess isn't here, but I, I don't know if, um, I do have the list to add everyone to those subcommittees and the list of the subcommittees if we have time for that.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to be mindful of, especially because a lot of these are in the morning. Um, there are, there are evening reviews with the board. So we will all have the opportunity to be right in the evening, just as an FYI, but it does look like the subcommittees are, um, in morning time. So. Um, this, I mean, there's enough notice here that I can probably put these into my calendar. I don't know if anyone else has flexibility in the morning. It looks like they're like nine to ten, ten to eleven, and it's mostly, you know, there's three days, um, November. Uh, tenth, fourteenth and fifteenth, I think the tenth I have a problem. The tenth I can do. You can do the ten.
But I don't see it as being a problem.
And I'm sure, um, you know, the, we have to be in person, but we certainly can have an open Zoom link for people who can't join.
We were told it as hard as that.
Yeah, I know.
So the fourteenth is a Monday, obviously the fifteenth is Tuesday.
So do people want to choose areas based on availability for days? Do you want me to mention each one and then people can share whether they?
Whenever we do it by day, I mean, it looks like. The tenth is what? Special services and food service and transportation. That's the only one I can do is the tenth, because the other two days I have classes during that window of time. So do you want to take those two?
Yeah. So that's special services and then what else?
The food service and transportation.
Kristen, I have you for that. Thank you.
You could do the ten also.
Yeah, what time zone?
There's nine to ten and then there's ten to eleven. So if, if one of you wanted to take one of them and the other, the other, I mean, you could split that too. But it really didn't matter to me.
I'll do, uh, nine to ten, because I can just go straight to the office.
Which one is nine to ten? Sorry.
The special services, special services.
So George, I have you for special services and Kristen for transportation and food service.
Um, and then on the fourteenth, there's, uh. Nine, again, it's a two hour block, so nine to eleven, but it's split up. The first one is facilities and the second is technology. Are you available? Unfortunately.
It can be.
Because I can be too.
The fifteenth works better.
I can take the fourteen. I can take facilities and technology.
So I could just take a half day and do. So I could just take a half day and do all three blocks on the fifteen.
Gee, I could take one of those blocks.
Curriculum is probably the biggest part of the budget, so whoever takes curriculum might not want. To take like two more, maybe only one, like maybe another smaller piece. And we can slot Jess and then check in with her as well for one of the areas.
So I, I, I can take curriculum and administration and then Jess would do one article. They're still on that out, but I'll be flexible.
And if Jess can't, I do one article, so I'll just wait to hear this.
Okay. Are there any others that we need to fill that we didn't cover?
Uh, no, cuz we did also appoint our SAU budget committee member, which was Pete. So that was the only other one and we did that at the SAU meeting. So we're set, so I have all of those.
Okay, i- is there anything else that we wanted to discuss in the consent agenda? So I will accept a motion to accept the consent agenda items one through ten as second. All second. Oh, I have to motion.
Oh, I motioned those things.
Thank you. And okay, we are up to calendar revisions, so there are some revisions to the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. Uh, we have some notes on this, um. Christine, do you wanna cover it? Do you want me to just? I've got the cheat sheet, so.
Either way.
Go for it.
Okay, so the first thing, um, according to the MVEA contract, their prof- their school-based PD day falls on the, the. Very end of the school year. Um, each year they come to us and request that that date be moved um to basically an empty day. All of the other districts have a full day for parent teacher conferences. Um, Mont Vernon only has a half day for parent teacher conferences, so we can't align. So what happens is Mont Vernon is in session and then would be in. In session, all of the other schools would be closed for conferences and that's confusing for families. We don't like to do that. So each year. They ask if we can move the PD day that is supposed to be at the end of the year to the parent teacher conference day. For the other districts so that all schools are closed on the same day to avoid confusion. Uh, so that's the first change. And then the other um is that it was uh November third was slotted to be that early release day. So with parent. Teacher conferences, it is um a half day that um is, is or early release so that. Teachers can do conferences then, um, but the uh, they would prefer to have the early release day moved to the. To Friday because conferences are Thursday night, which means it would basically be sending students home at say like twelve o'clock. And be doing conferences straight through that afternoon and then also that evening. So they were hoping to do an early release Friday, have that evening for conferences Thursday evening. Friday would be a normal day, but an early release and then additional time Friday afternoon, which I think might be more convenient for families. If they need to take off from work um to come in if they don't choose to do the evening sessions. So those were the two requests.
Okay, I think that sounds very similar. Everybody have any?
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we need a motion to approve that or? Okay, so who would like to motion for it? Thanks so much. Do we have a second? Second? Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Yeah.
The length of the academic school day.
Yes.
It's exciting.
Yeah, so the MVEA came to um Steve at the end of the school year and um one thing that happened last year. We had planned for um the, the buses to arrive at the same time student drop off so that there'd be a. About a ten to fifteen minute arrival process. What happened was buses could not get down the hill and get students on time to school at St. Egan and AMS. So all routes were shifted. So the buses were dropping off originally at seven fifteen last year and then we were able to make an adjustment um to seven twenty last year. So uh what that caused was that there was almost a thirty minute time in the, in the morning where kids were arriving. Which is feels like wasted time to teachers. They'd rather have all of their kids and be teaching them. Um, and also uh, you know, while kids had the opportunity to get off the bus and have breakfast, not all kids took advantage of breakfast. So they're just sitting in the cafeteria. Than waiting to like go down to classrooms. So the inefficiency um and just the longer time where then teachers have duties for. Seems pretty inefficient, which we recognize too, um, and, and agree. It was really just a, hey, we set our start time for the school year. And then buses had to be adjusted because of the change in the start time last year. So just an unfortunate circumstance. Um, but in looking to this year, the MVEA said, hey, we'd rather like give us that ten minutes that we had. Uh, you know, last year of duty time, give it to us as instructional time. Let's move everything, you know, buses are dropping at seven twenty and we don't have final routes. Um, so our estimate is that buses will be dropping at seven twenty. If buses drop at seven twenty, um, why don't we have cars also drop? So parent drop off would begin at seven twenty. So those two are synced. So that we can really by seven thirty-five hit the ground running and begin our day. So that was the request from the MVEA. Um, and I know last year we had actually had a little discussion about, do we make that adjustment? The concern was that this, last year was the first year in the earlier time and then asking parents to come even earlier in with that change was a lot, a big ask. Um, but given they've had a full year to get used to the earlier drop time, um, we're really only asking them to come about ten minutes before. Uh, you know, when the, the drop time was last year and I think now that they're used to that time, we don't think it would be a burden for families. We know it's early. Um, but it's we, it, it's wasted time for our students and for our teachers and the teachers asked for more instructional time.
Bonus is it adds instructional time.
It does. Yeah. No.
And we don't have any, do we need to do anything with the contractor?
Um, so we, we may need to. So the other piece is um if we're uh, so that's a, a yes and no. The, the only reason we wouldn't need to do anything for the contract for us to change that time, but by starting the um drop off a little bit earlier. The, the way the contract reads is teachers are supposed to um arrive thirty minutes before the start of the student day. Which we believe is the start of the instructional day, which would be that seven thirty-five. That would require teachers to come at seven oh five. There were some discussions, so um Tom and I had some discussions with MVEA. We're flexible with that. We just need. Teachers here a little bit before students arrive, that thirty minutes, um, it is a, 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 a enough, more than enough time. Um, we're flexible and we would need support from the board in being flexible and changing some of that time. They may not want the thirty minutes in the morning. They may prefer only fifteen minutes before, twenty minutes before. As long as we have a little buffer before students are walking in the building and then add that time to the end of the day. They only have fifteen minutes past. Um, dismissal at the end of the day. So we wouldn't be changing the total length of the teacher's workday. We would just be adjusting. Um, the thirty minutes before fifteen after, we may adjust to a fifteen minute before and thirty after or twenty and you know. Uh, just, you know, twenty, twenty-five. Uh, so that would be the only change. We would need some sort of, you know, sidebar. Um, MOU for the year to make that adjustment and certainly need board support for that. Um, but that would be the only implication if the board um authorizes that change. We would connect with MVEA on that start and end time of the teacher workday to work with them on what is best for their staff.
So suddenly five would be one of the suggested time as opposed to a hard start.
No, uh, um, so what, so seven, if we did start at seven, if we started arrival at, yeah, so if we start this. Student day at seven thirty-five, teachers according to the contract wouldn't be required to be here at seven oh five, which is early. So if we adjusted it where we said to them, nope, you don't need to come until seven fifteen, that ten minutes we're relieving them of. We would put at the end of the day instead.
If you have enough support to do drop off without a teacher being here.
So drop off wouldn't start till seven twenty, so we would probably say seven fifteen for teacher arrival. Yeah, so it is only five minutes. And again, if something wasn't working. Um, we do also have our paraprofessionals typically also are a seven fifteen start.
I think my biggest concern is going to be how, I think it makes sense and I think it's important. To align things in ten minutes, really in grand scheme of things, isn't gonna hurt anything, but I think people are very sensitive. Because the number of changes with like the bus routes and stuff that happened last year, I'm just concerned. About the perception is that we're finagling and you're taking sleep away from their kids again. Um, and I think. That the, the discussion and the communication of it is going to be very, very critically important so that parents fully understand. We're just trying to like.
Not waste time.
Do not waste time, like, yeah, just one time thing to like get us aligned. Like that's it, just that I don't think we're again doing this like constant change and gonna be kind of like adding five minutes here and there, taking more and more sleep. I think folks are really sensitive about that for good reason.
Um, do we know how many, what's the percentage of families that drop off rather than use the bus? Like how many people might be impacted by that?
I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head. I can tell you, car line does take quite a while in the morning. There's quite a line. We really get it to move pretty efficiently, you know, but even with that, their elementary kids getting on all the stuff, back and all that. So. Um, I think uh. I, and parents actually get here and are waiting. So there, there's actually a line. So that's seven twenty. There may be a parent here seven oh five waiting for the line to start just so their person lines and get up to work. So I think, I think it'll work. I think there's a sweet spot that we need to find with it. Um, but I think this. It makes sense to me that, you know, we're having kids in the building, but not in instructional time until seven forty-five last year. That just didn't make a lot of sense. So adding the ten minutes to me is a win-win. It's win-win for kids, staff. Um, and I think for the community, you know, there's a little bit of a buffer there. If we do start it right at seven twenty and it's seven thirty-five by the time we're actually starting the day. Um, you know, so there are some parents still like two wheels around the corner at seven thirty, you know, coming. No matter what the time we're gonna. Yeah, um, yeah, I hear you. I do hear you on the messaging.
And we can also see too, cuz if the bus company come, company comes back and says, hey, we're more efficient this year. We don't need to drop till seven twenty-five. Then we wouldn't, you know, uh, uh, make that a, you know, yeah, really probably would be ideal to seven twenty-five. Um, we just don't know if we could then start our day by seven thirty-five or if we're pushing to seven forty, but um, uh, our, our goal is to. Align bus drop off with parent drop off.
Yeah.
I mean, is there also potential flexibility, like if, if there's a lot of pushback on this concept to use that time almost as. Like, I wanna say tutoring time, but like if still ask for when the kids are here, bring them into the classrooms, but don't start formal instruction. Use it to, you know, how, did you have questions about your homework or what can we do like kind of enrichment or. A supportive time rather than instructional time right away. And I don't know if that's any, I don't know if that changes the flavor of it, but still like if there's a lot of parent pushback saying there's no way we're gonna get here at seven twenty. And the day needs to start ten minutes later, might there be some flexible options there to still utilize the time for the students who are here? It doesn't change equity of access or anything. I mean, if you wanted that additional time for support, you could still arrive early if you wanted. Um, but then it would potentially alleviate problems if parents are saying, no way, am I gonna get here earlier? It's just, the thought came into my mind, I thought.
And we kind of had that last year because once they um came down, got food at one point, I think what, maybe seven thirty? We then released them to classrooms as the drop off line was starting. So you would get your bus kids first. Then you would trickle in your, you know, car drop off students. So we kind of had, the teachers had about ten minutes of flex time last year. Um, where, you know, i- and it really, it was that unpack, get organized and most teachers had like a do now on the board. So kids came in and got started on something. That if some kids couldn't finish, it was okay, um, kind of more of an enrichment type thing. So I, I think the goal was. That to even shorten that time to just be more efficient, be able to start the instructional time. Um, again, I think that drop off was, did it, it started at seven thirty last year, is that right for parents?
Last year was seven twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
It was seven twenty-five, seven thirty-five.
Okay. So.
It's basically five.
No.
Yeah.
No, it was seven thirty-five to seven forty-five.
Oh.
Because we started, that's how we buy in ten minutes.
Yeah.
It's gonna be perception. I think folks are really, I think, I, I don't know what everyone else is pulsing. I, I heard a lot of frustration that they thought. Well, of course they're gonna go back to the regular start times because this was ridiculous. And when it didn't happen, they were shocked. And I was like, but you didn't. We didn't hear it from anybody until after it happened. It was so hard. That's, I just, that's why I wonder if this is gonna be a.
So if we do kind of what we did last time and I don't know the, I'm gonna take your pulse on this, but we typically will say, let's try this and then. Assess to see how is this working? Is like, it, are people really, really unhappy with the decision? Is it working for teachers that are on both sides? I think that is reasonable to assess and, you know, get feedback. Is that something that we can do? With that, I mean, as long as we don't put an MOU in place straight out of gate, if the, if the education association is willing to be a little flexible, then we could. Be good partners and stewards to parents and to teachers. That's.
Maybe run it as a pilot.
We, we could. Uh, the other option too is see where we are with bus drop off and really if bus drop off, if we can make it seven twenty-five, it's what we've requested. From the bus company. I think that will feel a little better to parents than the seven twenty, you know, the seven. Uh, and uh, we'd have to go back and uh, the handbook should kind of uh, last year's handbook. We can kind of double check to see timing and just try to be really sensitive if it's. You know, the least amount of difference from last year. Um, and again, if we're giving people, if we only give people a ten minute window, you know, maybe giving them a wider window. Might also help.
I mean, there's no difference for the bus students, the bus riders at the same time, you know, it's the parent drop off and. For that group, I think. I think the challenge was that if they're waiting in line and they're behind fifteen cars. And then they get up there and by then their student is tardy, that's frustrating. They've been waiting in line for fifteen cars. The car flying around on two wheels, you know, if there's no line, that's a different story. No matter when we set that time, that may happen. But I can see where, if we're not efficient in getting the cars moved through and there's only so much we can do, but you know, we do our best to.
We close doors.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, like Christine said, if it turns into fifteen minutes from seven twenty to seven thirty-five, I think there's gonna, it's just gonna be a little more. Time, it's not as stressed. Yeah, it's a little bit earlier in terms of when that first bell goes off in the day, but I think. I think there'll be a balance to it. I, I don't, you know, it is gonna be hard to know until we do it. So if we.
Yeah.
One of the things I thought of. When you mentioned it, it just hit me. Because you're dropping off the kids and my daughter kindergarten, she's one of those kids that always needed help.
Yep.
Because she's stepping on the SUV, you know, buckle, I'm trying to reach in the back, trying to buckle her and she mentioned you're getting a backpack and oh, wait a minute. The whole, is there any way those kids that need assistance maybe be dropped off further down? Because that's one of the things I found that you had cars that like, and I was one of them. People are waiting for me because my daughter, I'm waiting for one of the teachers to come help her out. Otherwise, I had to unbuckle, come around the car and help her. Is there any way, any kids that need assistance being dropped off further down? So those that don't, the older kids, they just. Cuz you guys were really good at it.
Yeah.
Well, you, you, I was shocked. As soon as I got that thing, it was like, you're on the rollercoaster, like whoo, whoo, and they're out.
Yeah.
It sounds like you're the problem.
Yeah, I was. I was. I, I admit, my daughter's easily distracted.
I used to stand out there and just dream of like the perfect car line, you know, they all line up. So I, just again, maybe a real challenge internally, the snow down there, that, that's like. Flying spots and that, cuz I had, I had a thought of actually having all the cars line up. Um, by the grass and then let them out into the grass, there's a passenger side. And then we group them in a cone and then walk them all across. If you haven't been out there, so follow that, but you know, there, there would be a way to do that. Um, but then it's still, there's a lot of traffic in the.
Yeah, yeah. Just a thought, if we had an opportunity to drop those students that need assistance coming out.
Yeah.
I wanted that way anyone, the kid boom, get out.
Look at, we can look at it.
Um, I wonder too if all of the parking in front of the NPR became visitor parking only and teachers were given either assigned spots in the other part of the lot. You actually could have people drive over the parking spots, fill that entire spot, let every kid out at the same time. They're still on the sidewalk.
Right.
Right, so if you count. Oh, yeah.
Definitely, yes, cuz that's one of my dreams.
Yeah.
It's different because if he's any assistance, they're sprinkled throughout that line. So it's like, you may have four or five cars that come through the kid boom. Then you have two cars in a row that someone needs to help get out and then.
Part of this is like the parents that were frustrated, the buses started dropping off.
I know.
So like, I'm just thinking of the Venn diagram of the population that we're communicating with and asking for ten more minutes. It's like, oh, you're dropping off anyway. Well. Oh, quite a few are dropping off because of how early the buses were picking up. So that's, that's where like the perception thing. I think it's. Such a creative way to address the problem and it's so important. I just, that helps explain.
So I appreciate the robust discussion. I have added, I tagged you in the card for our November meeting, just asking for. So I appreciate the robust discussion. I have added, I tagged you in the card for our November meeting, just asking for a brief update, if that works for you.
Yeah.
Sure.
And we'll try to work with the bus company. We'll try not to make a big shift. I think also if we message this saying, we want to give you a wider window for drop off. Um, so that the line moves and we can accommodate more families for, you know, both earlier and later. And we're adjusting by five minutes. I feel like that feels pretty good. And maybe just this is seven twenty-five. Um, we certainly would go to seven forty, but then, you know, we're, we're still compressing, especially buses are later too. So I think we really just have to get that bus drop off time and then um, we'll try our best to communicate well and not make significant.
Sounds great. Nice. I mean, I wanna speak for everyone else, but I appreciate the MBEA's willingness to look at adding instructional time. They're really fabulous partners for our kids. And I think that's awesome.
And then you could just address it with the union, just an MOU.
Yes.
Yeah.
So just a quick sidebar, I'm dating myself, but if you've ever seen Mr. Mom with Michael Keaton. And at first he's, he's a disaster at dropping off the kids, but then he becomes the drop off policeman. So it's.
Cause I'm usually in my shorts.
All right. Um, did you need any action from us on that, Christine?
No, um, not at this time. Um, the only piece is our student handbook does have times in there. So, and that handbook's gonna go live on the website tomorrow when we send registration out. So I just, we'll have to work together about what we want to put in there and then communicating out with families. How about that?
Um, and I, I do wanna make sure that there is communication besides the handbook, that it comes out either in a video or something direct communication about that change, because I don't want anybody to feel surprised. Um, I think that is important, if that's okay.
Yes. Oh, definitely. Yeah. I know, I almost wish we didn't have the drop off times in the handbook. Because I'd rather have a little more lead time until we have the bus worked out. So Tom and I can kinda work through some of those pieces. I don't know if it's better for us to put it in the handbook or, uh, you know, we can leave it a little open and then revise the handbook. And then send a message out that the handbook's been revised with updated times.
I only look at the handbook when there's a problem.
Okay, yeah.
Drop off times TBD.
Yeah.
And then will be or put in a supplement or a future.
Yeah.
So that way whenever.
Revision.
If you do change it at different times and different years, you don't have to keep updating.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's helpful. So Tom. It is.
Yeah, so it's just a PDA, just replacing the bus.
Yes. Yeah, we just never wanna be like sneaky, like all of a sudden, yeah, we try to be really clear with different versions.
Or something, yeah, this version and this is the change. I think that's helpful. Do people know what to look for?
Yeah.
Um, okay. Uh, nutrition service update.
Um, I don't have much to share on this. Um, this was regarding meal prices. Um, and, um, and I think they do need a motion, um. This has a request to change the meal pricing. Is that right?
I believe so.
Um, so just an approval to, um, pricing changes. So she's proposing for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, um, breakfast, a dollar seventy-five and lunch, three dollars. Um, the, uh, increased meal pricing to help offset the rising food cost, labor cost and cleaning supply cost. Um, so we would want a motion to approve the increase in pricing, which again is also something in the handbook that we've kind of left, um, open. Uh, dollar seventy-five for breakfast. And again, um, we no longer have universal free meals. So this certainly will affect families, um, that are not, uh, eligible for free or reduced price of lunching, lunches and breakfast.
Okay. Um, I don't really think there's much discussion about it. I think we just need to make a motion, cause I feel like our food service director has done a really great job at. I like work here.
And it is. So it's twenty-five cents for breakfast for the increase and fifteen cents for the lunch increase. So it's, it is, I should have shared that part, um, previously. So that's the proposal. And you can see, uh, you know, local districts range for breakfast anywhere from a dollar four or a dollar thirty or so. Looks to be the lowest all the way up above two dollars, um, which, you know, so we're, we're kinda right there in the, the middle. I would say for, um, our breakfast pricing, um, proposal. And then again, for lunch, um, uh, it, it certainly ranges. But it's not far off.
Do we have, this, I'm sorry, this is my question. I know this is like a minor thing. Um, do we have any kind of like quiet system? If there are students that are struggling with inflation prices and stuff like that, like do we have something?
Um, so the families would need to, um, apply for the, for your reduced priced meals. And some families often don't apply because they think that they may have hit, you know, uh, the, the cap. But actually that cap changes depending on how many family members you have in your household and also how many children. Um, so, uh, that, um, uh, we're encouraging all of our families to fill that, um, you know, free and reduced, uh, uh, paperwork out. Um, that's really helpful. It also gives us additional grant funding, the more families that qualify for that. And, uh, the other piece too, when, um, we start getting kids who are like holding lunch balances for a while. Usually Crystal will make a phone call and say, hey, have you filled that out? You might qualify. How can we help or support you? Um, and we certainly, you know, I, I know our school counselor and our nurse always keeps tabs on families and family needs. So I think that certainly would rise up, especially in a small school like Mont Vernon. Um, Tom, I don't know if there's, anything else regarding that.
Yeah, you covered it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any potential support if someone does not qualify for free and reduced lunch?
They would have to reach out to the school counselor or the nurse. To share, and we're usually aware. Um, and one other thing too, once a, a family has been designated as, um, you know, in transition eligible for McKenney Vento. They're automatically placed on free and reduced lunch, which is a helpful piece or reduced, I should say, free lunch. Um, uh, so that's, we take care of that at the SAU. Once any family who might be in transition and, um, need some support automatically gets that.
So how often are the guidelines to qualify?
They, they actually, I believe every year, um, the state sets what that threshold is.
Poverty level and kind of go from there.
Yeah, and, um, it, it's actually, they do a very nice job because it's not just, here's the poverty level and do you qualify or not? You actually, there's a whole worksheet for how many, um, family members in your household and, um, uh, you know, all sources of income as well. They look at, uh, for that.
One other question, I don't know if you have the answer for this. So at the end of the year, assuming there's a certain percentage of students with open balance. Who writes those off?
So, uh, Crystal shares those with Amy. Um, and we've actually been doing a lot of cleanup throughout last year. With, um, we had staff members with balances. They, they didn't even realize for like four or five years, they've been holding on to a balance that they didn't even know they had. So Crystal did an incredible job cleaning up all of those balances. So we're in pretty good shape now, um, for them. Um, but, uh, Amy does, you know, have to go in and actually write off the balances at the end of the year for anything we can't recoup. Sometimes, um, a kid might be holding a balance and they move and before we can get those funds, but we make every effort. Um, we also do, um, either, you know, uh, we'll sometimes have families come in and just hand us a check and say, hey, for any kids who have, you know, meal balances, please put this donation towards that, um, which is a really nice thing when, um, families, you know, are, are, um, open to, to doing that and we're able to support that way.
Sounds like a pretty tremendous.
I think so. And, uh, you know, Amy would be able to better answer. I know they've been on top of it, but she can talk through, you know, at a future meeting, just the exact process for that.
Okay, so we just made a motion to.
I will make the motion to accept the updated meal pricing.
Thank you. Do I have a second? A second? Okay, hold on, favor. Christine, update on our middle school structure. There's some things that may be helpful to hear.
We circle back just to the staff. It's, it looks, if I'm leaning it right, looks like we're.
Short still.
Yes.
In four weeks.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I, I wanted to share, um, I do also have a non-public for later, which will tie into this old conversation a little bit, but definitely wanted to share. Um, we have been unable to hire our point six Spanish teacher. And I'll share with you, um, down the hill at South Heagan, we have a full-time Spanish teacher posting that we are unable to fill. Um, but Tom and I think it's very unlikely at this point in time that we would be able to fill that Spanish teacher position. It's been posted since sometime in June. I, I don't recall exactly when, um, it's been posted for a while. We actually just refreshed the posting, so it looks kinda new and rises to the top of, of the list on those job boards. Um, we have gotten nothing. We did have one applicant and that applicant did not realize it was part-time. Their current Spanish teacher in another district, full-time. And would be willing to come or explore that option with us, um, uh, if it was, uh, full-time. But, um, uh, that, uh, you know, the applicant, you know, withdrew when, when, um, they found out that it was a part-time position. We've gotten zero other applicants and the fact that South Heagan cannot fill, um, one of their Spanish teaching positions. That's full-time doesn't give me a lot of hope. Um, so Tom and I have had lots of creative conversations. Um, uh, you know, uh, you, we could look to post a full-time if, you know, we had support from the board in increasing that. Um, certainly an option. Um, the, I, I still don't know that we would get someone in time. The other option, again, that impacts our, our master schedule, our special schedule and, um, would impact instructional time. So students would be, um, our t- teachers would have more specials and it would shift instructional time around. Uh, so we're a little cautious about that. Um, the only other idea that we have is really looking at the current specialists. We have and looking to increase those specials to compensate for, um, uh, not being able to fill Spanish. Now that would be a one-year only and that has a ripple effect certainly. So, um, uh, what do we do for especially our fifth and sixth graders? How do we provide opportunities? Which I think we would have to be looking at some creative options for some opportunities for those students. Um, we'd also have to be working with the middle school, talking about different Spanish pathways rather than just one and what that might look like. Um, uh, for our students and, um, certainly I did speak with Amy about it. Um, uh, would definitely have a, um, a little bit of a budget impact because some of our specialists would kick over, um, into a, a, a spot where they would, um, receive New Hampshire retirement, which isn't budgeted for. So, um, we do also have another staffing issue to discuss in non-public, which ties in with all of this. So I'm happy if the board wants to just share initial thoughts or ideas. But, um, a deeper discussion might be more productive once we go into non-public.
One quick question. It's interesting to me when you said that she was actually for a full-time role. Is there any way that that individual can be leveraged between the middle school and here maybe? And they still would have a, a full-time position, but not necessarily just in one facility.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe just a portion, you know, there is part of it to middle school and part of it here.
And we do share staffing, like we share staffing with Amherst, so it's, it's not unheard of certainly.
But we would still be able to, I, I don't know, just.
Yeah, and I hadn't, and, um, I was thinking more of the high school, but they need a full-time person. And also the way their schedule works probably wouldn't align well with how we need days of the week where they would need time slots. So.
They don't have anyone now.
Right.
It's, it's my point. So at least they would have somebody. They're gonna have to figure out their schedule anyway. If you can't fill a position. So to me, this is the lesser to leave them. So I see what you're saying, but it looks like neither one of us are gonna be able.
Yeah.
What about Clark Ruppins?
Nothing.
So.
They don't offer world language.
Oh, they don't.
We are, we are the, well, so there's, I mean, there's a lot of history with language at this school. Um, and being the, the longest standing member, I can tell you that it was very contentious here. Um, I mean, we had French and Spanish when my kids started, um, and they were, the programs were robust. And the community did not have overwhelming support for continuing with a full-time language program. So I really wanna be respectful of that, um, and bring forward the community voice. Because it was very clear at the time that that was not supported full-time. Um, so coming down to the point six, even that was a victory, um, for the school board to even be able to maintain that program. So just for contextual purposes and history, I think we need to put that out there. Um, is there a way that, I mean, could we do something with Velax or like have, have that as an offering? And have a parent or someone almost proctor it in the classroom so that kids could be doing the Spanish work while they are, roughly while they are in school, like during that time. And I mean, could, I know it may not be.
Ideal.
An ideal way to do it, but it might solve the problem. And the Velax curriculum is very structured and the kids could progress at their own pace. And potentially it still stay aligned. I just wonder about that. Again, not ideal, but I don't know that we would have an easy time explaining. Bringing on a full-time Spanish teacher when there hasn't been support for that, um, when our budget has been under big scrutiny. I myself support full-time language. I think it's really key. Um, I was devastated when that change happened, but, as a steward of our community, I need to bring that forward and say that that would make me very uncomfortable to say that we would need to push that forward. As a full-time, I, I just don't know that we would have positive community, um, input if we made that change right now.
Does Amherst only have Spanish?
They have French and Spanish and only sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. So when our students go over there in seventh grade, the AMS students have had a year of world language. Um, typically they're in about the same spot. Our students, you know, have an experience from kindergarten through sixth grade. But that's, they get it one and a half times a week. So one week they get it once, the next week they get it two times. Um, and just retention from your, a year with, um, only having instruction, you know, once or twice a week at most. It basically equals that one more intensive year that the sixth graders at the middle school get. So, um, they have world language every other day for the entire year.
I think your suggestion is a lot of for continuity. But the only thing that like popped up in my mind was that, wow, what's the job market like for French teachers? And they're still getting all of the peripheral benefits of a learning a second language, but maybe learning a different one than what we have traditionally done. I don't know if that's any better of a job market.
Can I ask you a question? So do, do you think, cause you touched upon the community and support, and I get that, do you think it was more because of the costs associated with providing that program? Or is it more of a philosophical thing? Because to me, it's having a second language, to me, is mandatory. We, I see it, 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 we live in a global society and in the job market, I know guys that work for Apple. And one of the big things is that you have another language, especially Chinese or Spanish in there. Doesn't matter, they're gonna get you in the door. So, putting that aside, I think me as an educational tool, I think it's mandatory. So whatever form that takes, whether it's Velax or getting someone. We can take that, that's fine. But I, I think to me, it's, it's just as important as math and, and you know, some of the other signs. It's another leg on that stool.
So if memory serves, uh, it was, it was not a philosophical issue. I mean, there were plenty of people, mostly parents, who came out in support of, um, the necessity for language skills being integrated earlier in curriculum. So our model here is starting in kindergarten, bringing it through. There was, I mean, so many benefits from their, you know, cognitive.
My daughter loved.
Yeah, being able to pick up language skills, having a better, um, having better articulation and, and, um, and cultural awareness. The way you speak, your accent, they know, sorry, clearly. So that was all appreciated. I believe it was a cost savings measure at the time. And there was a lot of discussion when our kids went to AMS, that they were not any further along than the kids who were at AMS who had only had one year. So, uh, the community expected that if we were investing in, in all these years of Spanish, why were not our kids further advanced? Um, and then we had a little discussion about what is the timing look like? So when you actually boiled it down to the number of classroom hours, it was a negligible difference and actually our kids get less, slightly, it was slightly less instruction at the time. I don't know if it still is. But for context, it was slightly less instruction over the course of many years, rather than more intensive instruction over the course of one year. So that was kind of the, the, the bent of it. Um, I don't know where that leads us, but I, I do wonder about continuity for our kids because we've had, thank you so much for your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
And I'm sorry, this has not been my most timely, efficient meeting today. Usually I'm right on, but we're way over.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot. There is. So I mean, my, my concern would be continuity for the kids that have already started. I mean, it's like kindergartners last year who started.
Yeah.
What happens there? We wanna make sure that they don't lose access. I don't, I don't know what the solution is. There's, I have more concerns and questions than I do anything else.
And, and we, um, we can, you know, have a preliminary discussion and then a deeper discussion in non-public regarding a staffing piece. Which might just help, um, or not. Again, um, Velax does have, um, elementary Spanish for every single grade level. Which might just help um or not. Again, um V-Lax does have um elementary Spanish for every single grade level. Which certainly could um, you know, uh but again, whether they're open or not and whether that. Uh my my wonder, and again, Tom and I talked about, do we um, do we offer it through a technology piece? My worry, I I would have to partner with V-Lax, they'd have to be expecting our students, so that is one piece. They'd have to have enough staffing to support all of our students and we have a little over two hundred, so I just don't know that V-Lax has the staffing to support it. They may. I would certainly have to check on that. I also don't know that it would be, you know, engaging for some of our younger learners to. Be sit, because it's individual on V-Lax. It's not like we could say, here, we put it on the screen in front and the teacher facilitates and kind of supports. It is, kids would be sitting with headphones on, working on their own on V-Lax. And I I worry about, I think kindergartners loved it because, and first and second, because we had a teacher who was a native Spanish speaker and she was able to engage the students. And they had conversations and so on. So I I worry about offering a program. And again, I I think we have to look carefully at what we do for our fifth and sixth graders, but I worry about our younger learners and it being only technology based. And whether that will be engaging or actually do more harm.
Would any of the middle school teachers have the capacity, if we did like a stipend situation, to do video lessons?
Oh, maybe.
Like to record video lessons that could then be used, I mean, because we don't have it every day of the week. It's special and I just wonder if that might. If we did a stipend something, I'm here for you.
I know.
Like there we go.
Yeah.
Maybe, I I don't know. I'm just thinking, how can we leverage the resources that we have and might someone feel horrible that our children. Would be lacking if they don't help us in that way and we'd be super appreciative and.
Right.
I I just wonder.
Yeah, I mean, it could, we could even extend that out to the high school.
Yeah.
Teachers as well. You know, to uh to open up that, we only have two world language teachers at the middle school. Um and certainly one of them might be really interested um in doing that and um, you know, both had remote learning at some point, so they're pretty used to those pieces. Um and you know, one lesson um for each grade level, which sometimes it's almost the same in each grade level, just with little differences. And so I think that that could be, you know, a possibility. I don't know if they'd be able to, it certainly wouldn't be probably enough for a full um. Lesson and a prep for our teachers. So that's our other challenge. It's uh we're trying to balance both. Provide exposure and a meaningful program to students and also ensure that we have a preparation period for our teachers during. That time or sometime.
Right.
To your point, which is a great one. If you took it a step further. We live in a remote environment, does it have to be someone within the school just like it's gonna be nationwide? I mean, there's gotta be some, I see child testing thing, I think, all the time. One hundred percent remote controller, one hundred percent remote. It is like literally about sixty percent of the job operating back into my desk, mostly more for remote environment. So is that maybe? I don't know.
Yeah.
I guess we have to be creative at least.
Yeah, uh and uh my worry would be again with our youngest learners that, you know, you need the games and the puppets and the. So it it's so tough with what we're trying to provide. It's like, it's similar to having a remote art teacher. You know, it's, there's lots of materials, there's lots of hands on, there's lots of conversation, there's lots of back and forth. Um, there's lots of partner work where the teacher's kind of listening and monitoring, so those are all really hard in a remote environment. And again, might, some of those pieces might be better than not having any exposure in any program. So uh you know, and one piece too is we certainly can look at. What opportunities like after school programming where kids might sit and do V-Lax and then someone's supporting that. So families who want access to that and feel strongly, we might be able to set a a and then so that was another idea, almost a more club type experience. For students. We did even talk um during our technology lessons and again, it's library and technology. Is there a way for Patty to kind of leverage some Spanish um there and and you know, whether we use our Raca Lingua, which is one of our um. Technology websites we've used um or Duolingo or something like that. We've even talked about that, how do we infuse Spanish in little bits? With technology. But again, none of it, we, Tom and I keep going back to, we feel like these are paperclips and Band-Aids. And and we want to ensure a meaningful experience for our students, so everything seemed to kind of get us closer, but. Nothing quite felt like we had a a creative solution, so.
So honest opinion, I mean, even if we offered a full time position, do you think we'd be able to fill it? Doesn't sound like it.
I don't. I I think it'd be a big challenge.
Do you think if we took on a different language, that we might be able to?
I think there's uh that that's a great question. I think there are probably more Spanish teachers than French teachers. French is usually harder to find. So. I I don't know that we would. I mean, we could update the posting with Spanish or French and see if we got anything.
Just imagine also the demand for Spanish is high.
So yeah, that might be true.
Yeah.
I don't think it's just a local issue. Nature, but I I just saw something, they, there's so many people just leaving the profession.
I'll just throw this one thought out is, and I like the V-Lax, I mean, if that's, that's the last. But have we reached out to Snu, Revere? UNH Manchester. And seeing if there's anybody there that.
I did reach out to Revere and uh they put it, they put it out there. She was not optimistic. Okay, she's the director of it and over at Reven and said, you know, this is a pervasive challenge. Across the, across the uh the market right now. Uh but I did not reach out to Snu and to that and and UNH.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do also like the idea of like a Spanish club. I mean, there's, it it would at least like keep Spanish alive here. In a way where it could be conversational and I wonder if maybe some of the high school students, like if anybody might be interested in coming over, getting volunteer hours. Potentially.
We did talk about that with the different end time that we end at two thirty here, they don't end till three thirty. And again, it might be a junior or senior who. Doesn't have a last period and isn't doing sports, but um stars kind of have to align for that. Cause we even said like, hey, is there a way, if we did a Spanish club, can we pay one of the Spanish teachers down at AMS or St. Hegan to come up to do the club? And no, they're not done till three thirty.
And I know there's like um different, well, we should talk about, we know more context. I think there's probably more conversation happening.
So if I said to say, the problem's identified. We're finding creative solutions, you're thinking it through. And we're gonna do the best that so that there's continuity for our kids this year.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Such a difficult situation, but thanks for putting your eyes and brains on that, because that's the real challenge.
We hate that we can't fill the position. It's like heartbreaking to us because we know that it's.
Five times a day.
Yeah, like, did did someone apply yet?
Okay, well, thanks for that.
Yeah.
Terrible update.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it.
There may be more.
Okay, so back to the middle school structure.
Yeah, yeah. So AMS is doing a little bit of internal restructuring to better support students. So uh what the the um restructure really is around student services. So um they're really looking to create a school within a school. So there's gonna be a five, six school and a seven, eight school. And really, that was kind of already in place um at the middle school in some sense, because fifth and sixth grade. Teams have two teachers um that are STEM humanities teachers, very, exactly what we do here for STEM humanities at fourth grade and up. It's in place there in fifth and sixth grade. And in seventh and eighth grade, very different teaming structure. We have a math, science, social studies and English teacher. So you get four teachers, you have a team of four instead. So we've already always had that distinction between fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth. Um and in looking at that already being in place and really, we feel like developmentally, that's meeting students' needs where um students only have two teachers to connect with. For them to support and they work as a team together, where then, you know, they're expected to have a little bit more responsibility when there are four teachers and a little, that's a big. Step up at that point. Um but also then looking at those kind of school within a school approach and really trying to make the school feel a little smaller and feel. Um as if there's a greater level of support for students. Um the student services team is also dividing up to really focus and to streamline. So um the lower middle school of fifth and sixth grade, they'll have um one school counselor, one social worker. And one of our assistant principals will will be assigned just to fifth and sixth grade in order to support those two grade levels. And to provide all of the student support, including um a five oh four, IEP, student discipline. All of that will be Carol Shanti, who was our assistant principal for student services. Her role is really expanding out to provide. A general and specific student services to all fifth and sixth grade. And I know Mont Vernon will be um thrilled to to keep John Shuttenger on deck for seventh and eighth. Where he'll be as the assistant principal for seventh and eighth grade. Um so the upper school, we have um one school counselor, one social worker. And then John as our assistant principal, really providing all student services supports. Um and you know, he has experience um for being here overseeing and supporting special education, so he'll be, you know, providing that direct support to all students. For behavior, discipline, um IEPs, five oh fours, all of that. So it's cutting down on the number of students. That you're kind of managing and supporting, big picture, um and really helping them focus and and provide that that deeper level of support. And they'll be checking in just on the effectiveness that uh at the end of October. To see how that's going and whether they're really able to streamline services and support having that upper school and that lower school. Any, any questions?
I'll be interested.
Yeah, yeah. And tied in with that, I don't know if it's later on in our agenda, um just uh with an update from the middle school. I know I've already met with John about those individual one-on-one meetings with our students who are transitioning down to AMS. Um and he's already planning on those meetings, he's setting up a schedule and really pulling that whole, you know, student support team for seventh and eighth grade in together. For those conversations. Um we even had a conversation, um Pristen, our new principal, said, hey, wouldn't it be great to call? Families the day you speak with the student, just to touch base, so that you've made that connection, then also with families. So just having those conversations, how can we better communicate, provide a deeper level of support and really make sure those students are connected? Um and uh again, we want students to be able to settle in a little bit and I know the board has also shared, you know, uh I think in the tuition agreement, it might say within the first. Month, um some of those conversations could extend out or they might do quick check-ins um earlier in the year and then have deeper conversations. You know, as as we know, things can change with students. We don't want to grab them on the first day um to have those conversations for how's it going? Uh so uh and we'll certainly have an update at the November meeting for how those conversations went.
Yeah, I know, I put a note in one of the Trello cards and I couldn't find the note and then I saw that it got added in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Like, how do I search archived cards? I don't even know where it went. But in any case, thank you for.
Yeah.
Um putting that update on there. And briefly, um. Do you have anything to share? I know that the warrant situation has changed in Amherst, I think that's important.
Yeah.
To talk about, I know we're gonna talk about um, you know, the middle school study committee a little bit. But can you share a little bit about what changed with the warrant and how that might impact here?
So uh right now, we're looking at only um uh putting the uh Clark, wh- what is, you know, Clark Wilkins now. So a new elementary school on the warrant, not both the restructuring at the middle school. So the goal is really to those two projects um for efficiency, they were lumped together, but that was a pretty. Kind of, I think we had sticker shock uh with the residents in Amherst for both of those projects happening at the same time. Even though you're saving money in the long run and efficiency, um it it was a a big ask of the community. So the um J-FAC committee really looked uh deeply at those two projects and what makes the most sense, where is our greatest need? And our greatest need really is at Clark Wilkins. It's a uh, it's a logistical challenge, having two different buildings. Just for communication coordination and building leadership support. Um so so that's one piece. So a building project there certainly solves the the logistical issues, but it also solves the space issue. We're at the point at Clark Wilkins where we have uh no conference room anymore. Um we're meeting on the back of the stage. For her conference room and for for meetings, our custodians have, the our head custodian doesn't have a custodian's office anymore. Every, and we've turned closets into offices, so every single space in that building is being utilized. And we are completely out of room. We've, we've really tried to preserve and to hold on to not putting our specialists on carts at Clark Wilkins. Because that completely impacts their curriculum. There's so much, someone outside. Um, someone outside. They may just be taking a walk. Oh, okay, thank you. They, I think they saw people in the building and came right up to the window, so it was a. Little startling, I apologize for the the distraction. But uh uh so just, uh you know, Clark Wilkins is in dire need, they're bursting at the seams. And one of the challenges too, um we've done a pretty deep facility um utilization study there this summer. And one of the things that really came up is that we've had to use, we don't have any small group instruction spaces. Here we have, you know, when the last edition was put on, these small group instruction rooms were created for OT, for PT, for speech. We don't have any of that at Clark Wilkins, they're all just classrooms. So we've taken classrooms and put up like partitions. And we have four different interventionists sharing one classroom. Well, it's taking an entire classroom space. Uh but it's also not effective when you have four teachers teaching at the same time, trying to teach our media students in small group instruction rooms. So um since we know that the, we're bursting at the seams there and it's having an educational impact on our students. It made sense for us to focus um energy and effort there. So the middle school for the time being, and I'm not sure, um I hadn't, I. Didn't have a most recent update from Amy. I know they had a a meeting earlier this week and I didn't have a chance to connect with her on that. But J-FAC will only be moving forward with the Clark Wilkins project or the elementary school project, which will not have an immediate impact. Certainly on Mount Vernon at this time. I think um long term, certainly looking at um doing some um a a again refurbishment. Uh especially if fifth grade is um, you know, moved down to the elementary school. It, they are certainly in need of um some of that, that restructuring work that was supposed to happen um to fix those pizza pie shaped classrooms and so on. But definitely further down the road.
Um, the other thing is uh Steve Chamberlain mentioned that he would be willing to do almost like a mini retreat with the board. About what middle school structure looks like and how that might, what it might look like here, potentially, right? So that um as we are getting ready to recommission the middle school study commission, which I think this just gives us a little bit of a buffer.
Yeah, time.
Right? And so getting the information from the survey that's going out and getting information from Mr. Chamberlain, I think will give us the ability to. Have a a more informed conversation as we start thinking into this again. And as we again, kind of ask the community to step forward and say, who's ready to really dig in and look at this and and explore it? I think it's a good next step. Um, there is a tentative date on September twentieth. I don't know. Um if anyone else is available, I am potentially not available. September twentieth from four to six, it's a Tuesday. Um, I think the invitation came out, I see you all on there, but nobody except for Mr. Chamberlain has um has said. If they could attend.
I can't, I teach, I don't get out of teaching till five.
Okay, and I like this anniversary trip, so I'm not missing that.
No.
No, not invited. So I have a feeling I may just ask Mr. Chamberlain if we can look at an alternate. That's why I can.
Or anything that's not Tuesday and Thursday.
Not Tuesday and Thursday.
Cause those are the times that I'm stuck in Durham until five. So then, other than that, I can be back early.
Okay, so let me see, I don't know, if it's Justin respond. And I'd be comfortable, if I'm not here, as long as we've got the representation, I'm totally fine with that, but it's not as much to see, but just. I don't know if you would, we can talk about.
Yeah, and I I just, uh, do you know if you can make it to the twentieth?
Not sure.
When in between getaways, but yeah.
So maybe adjust them though.
Okay, so um I'll see if I can coordinate that with Mr. Chamberlain and if you see an additional email come out, let's just see if we can um do that. But I do feel like the change in the warrant gives us a little bit more of a buffer, so we don't have to like slam this in right away. We can take a moment to pause and breathe and. Get people in place and really think it through thoughtfully. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I appreciate the work of our, you know, colleagues in Amherst and kind of pulling that back and restructuring, that certainly. Gives us some breathing room up here to think through what options might be. You do too, but I think it's good to know like what's on the horizon, so that. One of the things I think we've been really good at here is like planning, long range planning, really. Maybe thoughtful about what things might look like here and even if it, even if nothing changes, we can at least say we explored the option and. And it might mean that we are better partners to our colleagues down the hill and we could, you know, leverage some resources that way as well. So I think it's good to even. Think about it. Um, the other thing that I'll say is with the J-FAC committee. I I was unable to attend the first one this summer, but there's one coming up, so my hope is that I'll be able to come back to you and share some information from there. But I mean, it's a very, we're being included in a thoughtful way uh so that we can, you know, all stay on the same page and understand what the projects are. Both here and in Amherst and, you know, hopefully we can be more mindful of how our communities can work together, is important. Okay, friends, we're cooking. Our board goals, I know we've got some here.
And the first three goals are our academic goals, which we worked closely with the teachers on. And I know those are more school goals than board goals. Certainly, the board is supporting those, you know, school goals.
Thank you for adding that third one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Social, emotional.
Yeah, it's all important. Yeah.
And so community engagement was one that we were kind of working on and fleshing out a little bit. And I I loved our conversation earlier. I think it really brings to light that it is something that's forefront for our board. I don't know any ideas on what we might, you know, kind of put there for our goals. Our action steps are we're really good with.
I want, I desperately want measurables on what is effective, what isn't effective, like it's so it's not just communicating with the community, but really optimizing that. Yeah, and and making sure that we're exploring and not just making anecdotal assumptions on what does and doesn't work.
So what would be a good measurable there? I mean, how about just gathering data on participation, engagement with the community in general? I know it's not terribly measurable, but accept that we would have a data point to start from. It's kind of hard when we don't know. It's everything go off of, you know, how many people, well, how many families are in town, at least your households that are in town, and then see like how many responses we get to the survey and that might be baseline.
Right, yeah.
And also it will tell me a lot what the demographics are, who responds to the paper, like that survey versus the link that I post in chatter. Right? That will tell me a lot. Like that'll give us something. I think just getting these baseline data points itself is the goal. And then we then will have something to shoot for next year.
Right.
Once we know what we're dealing with and what the level of engagement is to start.
Right. So understanding who would like to engage with the board, how they are able to engage, and then taking our action steps from there. I don't know that we can necessarily define what the action steps are until we know how people are communicating. Thoughts?
Identify the census group. I don't even think you have that. And so until we have that, you can't really because you can't tell whether he is successful or not. Yeah, luckily we had a little turnout, but in actuality, the people did respond. They all responded positively. We just don't know. So I think I think we really need to start there. I was just gonna say, I think it's part of our budget. We need to maybe budget some money for direct mail so we can communicate directly. I can say it, but there's a percentage of the we're never going to accomplish socially.
But can we do flyers? But can we do it if we have flyers and like meet and greets and like, you know, there's like, is the direct mailing route going to be more effective than, you know, us taking turns at a summer?
Already has some demographic information.
I I know that there's some that Amy said that she had access to, but it doesn't tell us where people are or are not. And also, we're trying to get people to do who are not engaging with the school board in the school in any way, right?
Right.
We're trying to do a lot. It's a really, just this project in general, I think is rather ambitious, to be honest. Because we're, just like we're saying, we're starting with nothing. And like, is is that going to be the most cost effective way to reach people? It may be, we don't know. But maybe determine if we need a budget item for it.
I mean, to your point, if we at least are proactive and and put a line in the budget, I want to say we can defend it, but we can at least, we can at least identify that there's a potential need. Say that we are planning for it. And if we don't need to use it, clearly it gets returned. You know, I mean, like there's, we would be able to accommodate the need if it's identified that direct mail is the way to go. If it's identified that that's not, and that we need to make like ten posters and put one in the post office, one at the dump, one at the the transportation, one at the, you know, the library, the junk store. Like, if that's the need, then that's what, a hundred and fifty bucks maybe to make beautiful posters a couple of times a year? And I mean, that's a lot different than a couple thousand dollars for a direct mail. But at least if we have the ability or the flexibility in the budget, we could accommodate that.
I would say twice a year. You know, right before March, March town meeting. And then once in the fall, once the doors open and things are on it. That's really speculation on my part.
Well, I mean, the other thing that we had talked about, and I think maybe at the last meeting was, can we do almost a meeting minute, like summary sheet, right? Like, these were the highlights. These are the things that we talked about. I I don't know that anybody has the bandwidth to say, go to the, go to minutes line two or ten, or, you know, that might be a little too far, but I mean, minutes are searchable. So at least say like, here's your highlights. If you're interested in these things, go look at these minutes. And then the question is, where do we share that information? Is that shared on Mont Vernon Chatter? Is it shared at the post office? Like, where where do we put that? Is it a piece of paper? What? I don't know.
I really wanted to have hyperlinks to time points and YouTube videos. They're super easy to do. And then people can link it and go hear the conversation themselves. It's just, it takes, it's going to take, I mean, probably an hour to a month, which I'm willing to do, but like you pointed out, and I think other people pointed out before, the groundwork we lay needs to be Yeah, so are we, I I mean, is the success of it evidence of the call to make it sustainable? I would say with the data points, we can say that.
But, well, I think here we could also get creative and say maybe for this year, if that becomes a need, you know, if you feel comfortable spearheading that, great, but we could also potentially put something out to the high school students. Like, if somebody needs community service hours, it would be virtual. They could do it, you know. Essentially, this is the date that we need to buy and they'd have all month to get it done. And that would be a nice way to leverage community service and potentially get some assistance for our activity. Yeah, and it's very easy.
Yeah, like so easy to do. So yeah, I think just the the budget line item and then getting a baseline, understanding what the engagement we currently have is and what our communities needs are for communication.
Everybody agree with that as a whole and measurable? I mean, I think that's reasonable. And I think the intent behind this is clearly we are looking to engage. And so I would hope that if you know, any of our community members have ideas on that, that they would reach out to a board member and share those ideas so that we can improve that goal as well.
The measurement is to get a baseline.
We need a baseline.
And I just took notes as we talked. I can clean them up later.
Our facility, we give each other as well.
And that's the goal from last year. Are you comfortable with keeping that goal the same? Or is it? I know we've had just some discussions too about, you know, continuing to save for even some other long-term projects or revisiting some of those long-term projects that we might have.
I think putting a bullet in there about the long-term projects and making sure that that we stay current on our foresight. Wordsmith that. But I think that 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 is a good goal.
Emerging needs.
Something that we iterated, you know, when we talked with Roger, so.
Do we have the timeframe that we set for our long-term goals? Like, are we doing a ten-year? Like, what's the time?
Depends on the project and the cost. They're all different. Depending on that.
It's ten years out when I did the first ones. I mean, we were ten to fifteen years out, which is still, I think, a good, we have to look at things, make sure that we keep the building in good shape. So
Without adding that, without being a huge hit community, I think that's necessary.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else on the board goals? Or do we feel like those are finalized for this year? Reviewing that language for policy B H C. So this policy was was brought up recently. As you'll see, it was October of twenty twenty one. And what's come to light is that there was a slight revision, both Amherst and Sohegan revise the wording slightly. And the N V E A has asked the board to consider adopting the same language. And where is it? Can I see Christine, do you have? The change, where they need the change.
Yeah, I can. Let me bring it up. I can probably clarify it. I have like a redlined copy. I just have to pull it out. Okay. I had it from the June meeting, so I apologize. I have to scroll a little bit to find that. Okay, here it is. The, so Amherst removed just a few sentences from their policy, which since this is a board member policy, it's in the B policies, removing references to staff violating the policy was removed. So if you look at the policy, I'll read and then tell you what was pulled out. So it's towards, it's the the last paragraph. Therefore, discussions of personalities or personnel grievances by either party was removed, will be considered unethical behavior by the school board member. That's where the sentence will end. What was removed was and could cause the staff member to violate this policy. So the wording around the staff member also violating the board policy was removed. And then the by either party was removed. So this is really just clarifying, you know, chain of command. Certainly, it's chain of command policy, but really the the piece, I know our staff members were a little anxious about this policy. It wasn't the intent for us to certainly make our staff nervous or anxious. We know that being a small community, we come across each other in different places and have conversations, and it wasn't meant to cut down on those productive, positive conversations. The concern really is we wouldn't want as a school board member to put a staff member in an awkward position or a staff member share information that could impact the school board members' role on the the school board in making decisions. So just pulling those pieces out would make the Mont Vernon policy in line with Amherst's policy.
We did discuss it at the policy committee meeting this week. And the other piece that I'll bring up is that the B policies are school board governance and operations policy. So it makes sense to not have that policy relate to the staff member, but it should really, it's in relation to the board member. So just for context, I think it makes a lot of sense. We missed it when, I mean, there was, we missed it when we went through policy the first time. It was something that the Amherst Board felt strongly about. So he can also made modest changes similar, if not the same. And I would be in favor of accepting those changes. I think it is a reasonable thing to do. And I think it again, would sort of make our staff members
More comfortable.
Yes, more comfortable. And really, the onus is on us, not on them.
I think it brings consistency with the with the other B policies. That's more related. So to me, I think they're kind of common to me and so on.
But that, can you, you good with that as well?
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to revise policy B H C to remove that wording. And we can get that for
I'll make a motion to revise policy.
The changes to remove in the last paragraph to remove by either party and then to stop the sentence after unethical behavior by the school board member, period. So what would come out is and could cause the staff member to violate this policy.
What she said.
Just so that great. And I will use our new
Oh, I'm typing already.
Committee Slack. Abby and let her know about the change that we get the edit up on on this policy more effectively. So thank you for that, everyone.
Do you want me to do the redline version on there so that they, so Abby can see it? Because I have the redlined.
Sure.
Okay.
The other thing, I could take a screenshot of mine that I highlighted. Whatever works for you.
No, that's fine. No. Yeah. Use our new policy channel.
Until it started digging like crazy. And so we had a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
And I think it's nominations next. Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I have one nomination to bring forward Sherri Hall for the grade three teaching position. As you might recall, Kira Bell resigned this year. She's moving to Florida. And we had internal interest. So Laura Graham was really interested. She has a strong experience in math. So she was very excited about a STEM position in fourth grade. So Laura applied and we transferred her to fourth grade. So it left third grade open. We were very lucky to have Sherri Hall, who was a substitute teacher up here. She's an Amherst resident and came up the hill to sub up here and was just amazed at our wonderful school up here. And she's, she said to Tom, if there's ever a position, you know, would you consider me for it? So I certainly went through the application process, but Sherri was by far our strongest candidate. She has hit the ground running. She has been doing so much professional development all summer. She keeps coming in for resources and checking in and asking for, you know, what other resource should I look at? What what can I do to? I want to hit the ground running. So she's been really excited to start here in grade three.
Sounds great. Love that energy.
Yeah.
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 So we need a motion to accept the nomination.
So I know Sherri Hall, so should I abstain?
You don't have to. You certainly can choose to abstain. I think sometimes the challenge is if there was something that would prevent you from being comfortable on voting in support. I think that's often the time to abstain if you're aware of something. And again, we can always go into non-public too for any discussions. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'm knowing. Yeah.
It's a small town.
I know. Yeah.
True.
And that does come up often and and it's up to you, you know. Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the nomination of Sherri Hall as our new grade three teacher. All my new Sherri Hall for the new grade new teacher. Thank you. Second, okay, so all in favor? Welcome Sherri to the team.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe we do have a reason for a non-public session.
We do.
And that is RSA ninety one A three two. Do we have any?
I think it's, is it C for staffing? Is it, I can pull it up too. I should have this like in front of my computer all the time. Let's see, it is A three. Denise, do you know, is it C for staffing? I'm trying to find. Oh, yeah, which is often, yes, staffing. Yeah.
I know I security.
More times than not, they will ask us.
Yeah, A. But that's not, yeah. Oh, yeah, it is C. Yeah, it's C.
Okay.
Yeah.
So
And I I don't think we would, you know, I certainly can just turn off video and mute in case we have any any motions after. I don't think we necessarily would. So I'm happy to do either if we're ending with our non-public, but I also can, once we motion to go into non-public.
You might have a preference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety one A three two C.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Thank you. Second, we don't need a call, do we? Okay, so we are entering non-public at eight twenty four and proceed if you would.
Stop the recording and then turn off Zoom.